Before our meeting actually begins, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Brady, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Today, oh God, we ask for your Spirit to be at work in our midst, that you might stir up in us the gifts that we need to lead this city with integrity and focus on the task at hand. Give us the courage to consider all those who are affected by the decisions that we make. Help us to remember those who labor on our behalf, our employees and vendors, and all those whose livelihood is connected to the city of Sandusky. We give you thanks for our citizens who have placed their trust in us, and we ask for courage and wisdom to be good stewards of both their trust and their resources. Amen.
But please, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presser, just call the room, please.
Ms. Lloyd? Here. Ms. Blocker?
Here.
Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
I am here.
Someone care to make a motion to excuse me?
Someone?
Second.
A motion second. Question? No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objections, the motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of December 11, 2017, and it's a pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the week seven minutes in the December 11 meeting and dispense to the formal reading.
Second.
A motion second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objections, the motion is approved. We now start celebratory occasion today. We have a lot of extra people over here. The three of us are happy to be reelected and looking forward to four more years of service to the city. We begin with the oath of office. Mr. Harris, I believe that's the correct order. Mr. Cresser?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll do it in alphabetical order, and that means Cousin Brady is first.
Mr. Brady, I don't know if you want your family to come up with you while you take the office.
The order.
If you guys want to.
She wants to.
Want to go in front there, or?
Yeah.
Got more room there.
I state your name.
I, Richard R. Brady.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As city commissioner.
As city commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness.
Except that of merit and fitness.
In the appointment and discharge of employees.
In the appointment and discharge of employees.
That I am qualified.
That I am qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
And I will maintain all of the qualifications.
And I maintain all of the qualifications.
Throughout my term in office.
Throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Section Four.
In compliance with Section Four.
Six.
Six.
And forty-three.
And forty-three.
Of the city charter.
Of the city charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Brad, Merry Christmas.
Now, the requirements for the oath of office are that it has to be administered by either an attorney or another elected official. So I have a lot of choices in my family, but I am delighted that my father has agreed to administer the oath. There is no one that you will meet who loves this city more or has looked forward to the Renaissance that it's experiencing today, and so I'm delighted to be able to have you administer the oath.
Thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to do it. We had a little different one to do the oath part, because I would like you to raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible, which was your grandfather Emmett Murray's Bible. Unlike Cuz, who did it the other way. I think it's more awkward. But just before I do, I must observe, the reason I asked Peggy to be here, and I'm so grateful Martha and your son Nolan are here, is because otherwise it would infer that I did something in conjunction with having raised you to be defined and to... All right. I did not. Your brother did, as he did with all of your brothers and sisters. I know all of you probably know this, but this will be when Dennis completes his term, the thirteenth year that he has served either or both the city of Sandusky and the state of Ohio. Some people could look at that and say, well, that's a long time. That's too long. But you could look at it, as his mother and I do, in accord with Mae West, if you remember the Sardegna forties. Mae West observed something that's pertinent to this, and that is, too much of a good thing is wonderful. So was that Dennis?
I must correct you, though. Fifteen years.
Fifteen. Well, see?
It almost seems like thirteen.
All right, let us do the oath. For the first time in his life, he will just have to do what I tell him. So would you please raise your right hand and put your left hand on the Bible? Is that how we decided to do it, did we not?
We did. And you're not going to do it...
No.
You're not going to do it here of Hoopster style, right?
No, I will not. I will. I'll try. I'll try.
Exactly. I was just thinking that.
Yeah. I don't know. It's not a good way to do it. So repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio and the Constitution of the United States.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office as a city commissioner.
Discharge the duties of my office as a city commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness.
Except that of merit and fitness.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Section Four, Six, and Forty-three of the city charter. So help me God.
In compliance with Section Four, Six, and Forty-three of the city charter. So help me God.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Not going against the other commissioners, but we...
Dear friend.
When Commissioner Twine got reelected, she sent an email to all the directors saying, "We can't have you as a liaison." So I thought it'd be fitting that he came. Actually, we stepped on the other side.
And I want to thank my mother and my daughter who couldn't be here today. I thank them for their prayers and support. And thank you all here that are here today. Thank you for your prayers and support.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Naomi R. Twine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Ohio.
And the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Sandusky.
Of the city of Sandusky.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
That I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of my office as a city commissioner.
Just discharge the duties of my office as a city commissioner.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
And not be influenced by any consideration.
Except that of merit and fitness.
Except that of merit and fitness.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
In the appointment or discharge of employees.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
That I am currently qualified to hold the office.
And will maintain all of the qualifications.
And will maintain all of the qualifications.
Throughout my term in office.
Throughout my term in office.
In compliance with Sections Four, Six, and Forty-three.
In compliance with Sections Four, Six, and Forty-three.
Of the city charter.
Of the city charter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
The final piece of our organizational meeting, before we turn to our regular items of business and the other items that we have as part of a regular meeting, is the nomination and election of officers. So the chair would invite any nominations for the position of City Commission President.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I would like to nominate Dennis Murray Jr. for president of the city commission.
Second.
I will be happy to accept your nomination and thank both of you for the nomination and the second. Are there other nominations? Then the nominations are closed, and there being only one candidate, I want to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve in a leadership role in the city again along with all of you. Would someone care to make a motion for the position of Vice President of the Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I'd like to nominate Dick Brady for Vice President.
Second.
Then a motion and second. Are there any other candidates to be nominated for the position of Vice President of the Commission? If not, then the nominations are closed. And Mr. Brady, congratulations. I get to serve with you again, and it'll be my pleasure.
I would also like to thank my colleagues for both the nomination and the election, I think.
I had some remarks that I was going to deliver at the end of the meeting, but given that we have a captive audience, I think I'll do it. I think I'll do that now. Well, why not? So as we close out 2017 and look forward to Sandusky Bicentennial Year, I would like to express my gratitude for several people and organizations. First, to the police officers and firefighters who demonstrate bravery and grit every day, thanks for keeping us safe. To the skilled people who run our waters and water treatment plants, thank you for keeping us and our environment healthy and for providing Ohio's best tasting and award-winning water. To the men and women who see to it that our parks are the best and most beautiful they can be with the resources that we are able to provide, thank you for making Sandusky beautiful, and thank you to the ref department for making it fun. To the street department and public works departments, thank you for keeping our streets paved and clear and for the work that you are doing to recover from many years of disinvestment. People are noticing. To our planning and development offices, thank you for guiding work and investment to make Sandusky a more beautiful city. A special shout-out to our code enforcement officers. Although your office was long neglected in bad times, your work, house by house, block by block, is making Sandusky a safer place to live, a safer place to invest, and in a home, and also beautifying the city. To our engineering department, although we can't understand what you're saying most of the time, thank you for your meticulous planning and execution. We can have all the grandiose plans in the world, but nothing is accomplished without the skills and work to make it happen. To our business partners, large and small, thank you for your investment and faith in Sandusky. The absolute best solution to all of our problems is job creation, and we are seeing real progress in our area. To our partners in other local governments, even Mr. Shenego, and the nonprofit world, thank you for your collaboration and investments. It is only by working together, respecting each other's visions, and constructively solving our issues, that the larger region is able to move forward. To the Sandusky City Schools, thank you for educating our most precious resources and working every day to improve education in our community and providing educational opportunities that truly are unique in Erie County. To the members of the Bicentennial Commission and those who work with them, for your hard work and imagination in preparing Sandusky to celebrate our great city and recall our heritage. To everyone around this table, thank you for your faithful advice to us and for your service to this city. To my colleagues on the Commission, again, thank you for the opportunity to play a leadership role in this body and great city. And most importantly, thank you to the residents of Sandusky for your presence, for your investment in our city, for the cool factor that Sandusky's unique culture brings to our city and region, and for your excitement in our city, and for your essential financial support, without which so much was untatable for so long. Today, Sandusky is poised and armed with an outstanding plan and the finest group of employees this city has ever known, and we have adequate funding and public support. We are at the edge of our bicentennial year, and we are also poised to achieve great things as a community. On behalf of the Commission, we wish all of you and those at home a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and may you and Sandusky enjoy a happy, prosperous, and exciting bicentennial new year. Thank you. The formalities are over now. We get to the drudgery. Anyone who is here is most welcome to leave, and thank you, Dad.
Anybody else? I'll see you guys next year.
We won't take offense. It might be more offended if you stayed. So we turn now to audience participation, as we always do, but before we do so, let me say that... I need to find the item number. Item number... Pardon me.
Four.
Ah, there it is. Item number four. I'm removing that from the agenda. A number of the commissioners, myself included, had some questions about that. Just needed a little bit more data before we could take action on that. Staff has it, but we just didn't have time to get it to all of us, so we'll be considering that in January. So that item having been removed, anyone who wishes to address the Commission on any agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Seeing no one step forward, we will turn to... Whoops.
Chris Parthmore, 111 East Madison Street. I'm here representing the Sandusky State Theater, and I wanted to talk about Agenda Item Number Two, the creation of a Public Arts and Culture Commission. The arts create stronger communities. They're a cornerstone of tourism. They're a cornerstone of the economy, and they're a cornerstone, to steal one of Mr. Murray's words, they are a cornerstone of the cool factor. And we recently put a mural on the back of the State Theater, and that was the first piece of public art that we had in downtown Sandusky. The process was pretty hard to go through, and it took a lot more than it should have to get that passed. But since we've put that on the back of the theater, we've seen a really great impact. There's people coming down to take wedding pictures there. There's people coming down to take prom photos. There's tourists coming in already and taking pictures, taking selfies with it. The social media presence that it's created has been fantastic. And, you know, without that art there, I think there would have been... I think there would have been a hole that would be hard to fill. The creation of this Arts and Culture Commission will make it easier for public art to be created in the future, and, you know, communities that have a strong arts and culture aspect to them tend to have higher civic engagement. They have more social cohesion. They have lower poverty rates. There's really not a downside to investing in the arts, and so on behalf of the State Theater, I would encourage the passage of Item Number Two.
Thank you, Mr. Parthmore. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? You only have five minutes, Mr. Zuloff.
I was... Mike Zuloff, Sandusky. I was here to talk about the same ordinance, and I was going to say some nice things about the sign behind the State Theater too, but I think Mr. Parthmore covered that well. So I think it's important... All the wherases in these ordinances are important, and it's well thought out. I think it can get really messy when you do public art. What happens is, everyone has an opinion, and people say, "I don't know anything about art," but they sure do know something about art when you want to put something in a public space. So a well-chosen commission, I think, is really important, and I love everything about the ordinance. I think everything about the ordinance is good and well thought through. I think that the qualifications for appointment to the Commission probably need to be a little bit stronger. I had drafted something. I wanted to... I didn't know this was coming. I only became aware of this when I saw the agenda. So I... And I really wanted to provide something more in writing, but really didn't have the chance yet. I did have a draft of some qualifications, and I think it really... I'd like to get that to you folks, and I presume you're not passing this on emergency legislation rights. There'll be time to consider that. But I think it's something that's due, that we do, that we have the funds to do this, and we need more public art, and I think the public will support it. It would be a slightly better ordinance, and I believe that in the pursuit of excellence, you've got to keep trying to improve things before you settle. Sometimes I think Sandusky's settling less than it used to and demanding more excellence, and I think that's a very, very positive thing. So I'll share with you my thoughts for the qualifications by email or something, and I hope you give that due consideration. You can be worse off with a bad commission because it could lead you to all kinds of problems, and having written qualifications are no guarantee of a good commission, but I think you'll find a lot of people well-qualified in this community to serve in that capacity and more than willing to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. And those in the room, I think, all know that I can take that shot I did at Mr. Zuloff because I regard him as a friend, but those at home may not know that. So thank you always for your contributions to the city and for the ideas that I know will be worthwhile that we were sending by email. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission? Then we will turn to a public presentation, actually, hearing, excuse me, regarding a zoning map amendment to eight parcels running Rockwell Street, Hayes Avenue, and Pear Street. And here to open that public hearing is our chief planner, Casey Sparks.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Commission. The applicant is Firelands Regional Medical Center. They have applied for a proposed zoning amendment to several parcels along Hayes Avenue, Pear Street, and Rockwell Street. The zoning amendment is for parcels that are currently zoned to single-family and residential business. The applicant is proposing to rezone them to public facilities. On the screen, you'll see the parcels that are in question this afternoon, as well as the existing zoning map. The applicant is proposing this for the creation of a parking site. The parking... The proposed site plan is for estimated about 147 parking spaces, and this will serve the VA that is actually proposed to be set in South Campus. They will occupy approximately about 12,000 square feet. So as you know, our bicentennial vision and our comprehensive plan calls for the creation of an eds. and meds corridor. Firelands has been very active in purchasing property to continue this vision, and staff at this time does recommend approval.
Thank you, Ms. Sparks. Can I complete your presentation?
That does. It's very quick.
Commissioners, questions or comments? This is a public hearing, so anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed zoning, please step to the microphone.
I apologize. We obviously have someone here for the hospital, so I apologize for not introducing you.
Hi, my name is Robert Moore. I'm the general counsel for Firelands Regional Medical Center, and we've gone ahead and put forth this application. We have been working with our local VA clinic now for going on almost two years. And just for the record, the current VA clinic is located at the soldiers' and sailors' home, Howell Veterans Home, and they made the decision, the state made the decision, not to pursue or work with the VA. Not that they didn't, but it just didn't seem to be in the cards, and so there was an opportunity for Firelands to submit a bid. We were approved. We've been working over the last year and a half to make this all come together, and actually, I just got a communication today to proceed with the plan, so this is very timely, and we're very excited, and we're planning to be basically build out on the second floor of the South Campus, about 12,000 square feet. We will look to have on our providers, the physicians, nurse practitioners, nurses, about a staff of somewhere between 25 to 30 VA employees. We will look to see anywhere on a given day, I think somewhere... And I'm going to make a guess here. I think it was like 12,000 or something vets or even more. It's a pretty high number that we're going to be able to see. And so as a result, one of the conditions is a expansion on the parking, expansion on the handicap parking as well, and the one final note is Mr. Fox, who is our neighbor, and he's the one house that's across from the South Campus, and I've talked to Mr. Fox, wonderful gentleman. We have offered to purchase his home. We've offered to find a similar home that we could exchange for his home, and he likes being the neighbor, and he's very content, and he said, "When any time comes, he'll be happy to contact me, and we can talk about relocating." But he really, right now, is fine. He's an older gentleman, and he's pretty set in his ways, and be quite... He said, actually, he likes the fact that he lives right across from the hospital or from the South Campus. He feels very secure there. Obviously, we have security there, and so it works out well. So we're building the parking lot around him, but when he's ready to leave and let us purchase his house, we'll then finish that off. But so, anyway, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer, if I can, so.
Well, Mr. Moore, I have to say, that is a wonderful Christmas to bring, a Christmas gift to bring the city. All the addition of all those jobs. We didn't actively seek to poach anyone, but we are delighted to...
Sure.
...have the expansion here and the additional investment, and we thank the hospital very much for what you're doing for our community.
Yeah. Well, we're really excited because, again, you know, by just happenstance, Hayes Avenue's come, the healthcare corridor with gnomes at the south end, and obviously, the main campus at the north end, and the VA really saw that. And while we are... It's a landlord-tenant relationship. They also see the opportunity there for ancillary services. Right now, a lot of the services are going up to Wade Park. Our vets are having to travel in excess of an hour to get there, basically, in essence put, having to set aside a whole day where many of the things, many of the specialists that we have right here in Sandusky can serve the vets. And so I know the operations folks from Cleveland are very excited because they see an opportunity here to work with, again, our local medical providers as well. So we really see this as a win situation for everybody involved, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yep.
Anyone else present wishing to speak to the proposed zoning change? Then I will declare this hearing closed, and we turn now to a presentation regarding the potential for a Public Arts and Culture Commission, which is on our agenda, and that will be presented by our assistant planner, Greg Volz. Welcome, Mr. Volz.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity to present, Mr. President and members of the Commission. I am truly honored and humbled to present this to you today. We announced this at the State of the City last spring, and in the destination city of the section of Sandusky 2018 strategic plan passed a few years ago, an entire page is dedicated to arts and culture. We do have a lot of great partners in this, such as the State Theater, the Maritime Museum, Mary Go-Round Museum, the Sandusky Cultural Center, Harlequins Theater, Sandusky Library, and Great Lakes Visual and Performing Arts Academy, just to name a few. But we, as a city, can do one more thing to make an even greater impact on the arts, and that's by creating our own Public Arts and Culture Commission and present for our program. This is a short presentation of what the proposed legislation brought before you today will do for the arts and culture in our community. Public art is any media that has been planned and executed with the intention of being staged in the physical public domain, usually outside or in an enclosed public space and accessible to all. So there are many... So, there are many benefits of public art. There's social benefits. In fact, it was found that either engaging in creative activity or simply attending some kind of artistic event appears to improve physical health. This could be in part due to its ability to relieve stress. Also, the arts engagement widens and strengthens social bonds, which also improves health. It creates civic dialogue. Where others have been unsuccessful or for whatever reason are not taking initiative, the arts and humanities can sometimes be a catalyst for liberating a stuck idea or dialogue and mobilizing different players or moving people to take up an issue. It enhances public spaces. Placemaking is the art and science of developing public spaces such as parks, libraries, and public buildings that attract people, build community by bringing people together, and create local identity. Is the creation of a built environment that creates community, stimulates interaction, encourages entrepreneurship, fosters innovation, and nurtures humanity. And it also attracts attention to the city, which goes to a more local scale and can enhance a smaller intimate public space that may be otherwise underutilized and create a unique destination in a park or trail or other area that may be longing for a perk-up. It also increases public appreciation for art. It gives free access to public art, which allows people to access the art and appreciate it, as you will see on the next slide. It also connects artists with the community, as public art has a public process built in, to make sure that the art is appropriate for the space and something that the local residents would enjoy. But most importantly, money's always an issue, so the economic benefits are the most important. The arts attract residents and businesses. The density and prevalence of arts may play a role in attracting residents and businesses to relocate or locate to a community by improving its image and making it more appealing. Gives it that cool factor. This is especially true for attracting highly skilled, high-wage residents who will have a larger economic impact. Businesses, especially those that employ highly trained mobile personnel, may consider the presence of art venues when making relocation decisions. High concentrations of artists and/or high-skilled workers may produce agglomeration effects where businesses, especially those in fast-growing creative industries, are drawn to an area because of the availability of creative talent and/or high-skilled workers. The arts attract investments. By improving a community's image, people may feel more confident about investing in that area. For example, people might be more likely to buy a property in an area that they feel is up and coming because of the presence of the arts. Or banks may be more likely to lend to a business in areas perceived as more secure and stable, and so on. However, nationally, this is the most important. The industry generates 1.3, $135.2 billion of economic activity. This supports 4.13 million full-time jobs and generates $86.68 billion in resident household income. It also generates 22.3 percent, or $22.3 billion in revenue to local, state, and federal governments every year, a yield well beyond their $4 billion in arts allocations, which is a 450% return on investment. These are numbers occurred in 2010 at the heart of the Great Recession. A good case study is Belleville, Illinois. In 2002, a city in Illinois began a sculptural art event and program. This program grew over the course of the years and Belleville is now a nationally recognized city for the arts. This has left 42 sculptures in the city and has attracted hundreds of artists who could be locals or out-of-towners, who interact with the locals and with, visit the schools. Since 2002, this event and program has attracted $30.3 million in spending and hundreds and thousands of visitors. This is just a small example of the economic impact of art on a local community.
And sometimes it's impossible not to notice it. Let's go explore some outdoor art. It's free! What the heck is this dragon bow arrow doing here? What does it make you wonder? It kind of looks like a ship. Did Cupid shoot his arrow into the ground? Did he leave his heart in San Francisco? What perspective do you like better? Asking yourself questions is a great way to make sense about art. Action! Check this out! It looks like a sea urchin. Think about delocation and how it relates to the art. The artist learned how to make origami once she was a kid. Sometimes her paper art becomes permanent sculpture. Do you have a fountain in your town? Do you know who made it? The more you learn about the artist, the more you'll understand the work. Hey, I'm over here in the woods. This almost looks natural. It's nearly 100 feet tall. How did this get here? They used a crane. How does it stand up? There's concrete and metal inside. What does it remind you of? The artist said it was inspired by a church tower. What does it mean? The artist wants you to decide. Question it! Does it look different in daytime or nighttime? Is it related to the stuff around it? What is it made with? Is it permanent or temporary? Are you opposed to interact with it? Does it refer to the community? Did the neighbors help make it? Get out there! Get out there and notice your local art. It was made just for you.
All right, so, the Sandusky Percent for Art Program and Public Art and Culture Commission will do three main items. It will create a Public Art and Culture Commission. It will dedicate funds to public art. And it will also require the creation and maintenance of a Public Art Master Plan. There are examples of similar pieces of legislation throughout Ohio, including Sylvania Township, Centerville, Toledo, Cleveland, Columbus, Kent, and the state of Ohio. So, first up, it will create a Public Art and Culture Commission. It'll be a nine-member board who are dedicated and educated in the arts and will serve as stewards of the percent for public art funds. New artwork and projects will go through them for approval and they will help create guidelines and processes through the Public Art Master Planning Process for public art moving forward. Five would be appointed by city commission, four by the city manager. There will also be a student representative, a city staff person, and a city commissioner to act as ex officio members. It will dedicate funds to public art. The Public and Cultural Art and Acquisition Fund will be funded on an annual basis with the use of general funds, not admissions tax dollars. However, 1% of the total admissions tax received from the previous year will be used to calculate the budget for the P C double A F. For example, in the year 2016, the city received $4.3 million in admissions tax revenue, which would create a line item budget for public art under the general fund in the amount of $43,000. Funds may be pooled and aggregated over a few years of project costs deemed necessary and funds can be used for maintenance and curation. It will create a public, a public art master plan that will assist in the formation of the Public Arts and Culture Commission, including desired qualifications to serve on the commission. So, it will create guidelines for the Public Arts and Culture Commissions that the members would need. It identify opportunities through the whole city for art in the public realm as a way to improve the community. It identifies opportunities throughout the whole city for performing arts, including live music in the community. It provides maps identifying locations of potential artwork and other art opportunities. It will help set public art policies. It will identify potential funding sources beyond the Public and Cultural Art and Acquisition Fund for the care and creation of public art and performing art. It will develop action steps for public art and performing art that are achievable within one to five years, as well as long-term initiatives. It'll also identify with funding options, temporary public artworks, and permanent artworks. But we shouldn't think of this as a planning process. We should go, all go into this with the mindset of a beginning of a semester worth of art classes and education. We will learn new things about our city and about each other. We will discover and rediscover beautiful places of Sandusky and think of new and exciting ways to make them even better. We will disagree and discuss provocative ideas that will move dialogues forward about what kind of city we truly want. There will be projects, assignments, artworks, and more completed and started during this process. And at the end, we all have a plan of action to move the arts forward in Sandusky and the Firelands region as a whole. So, please take this opportunity to inspire and help bring a sense of wonder for young and old through a commitment to art and culture in the city of Sandusky, Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Volz. Excellent presentation. Commissioners, questions or comments for Mr. Volz? Okay, thank you, Ms. Volz. Very persuasive. You might have Mr. calling as a lawyer. All right, that completes our presentations. And would someone care to make a motion to accept the communications?
To move?
Second.
And a motion, second, discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Item one is being presented under section 13. Is it-
I, I, I'm sorry. We would like to have that presented just as on first reading.
Okay.
Is it a zoning, sir?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, excuse me. Apologize, I got it mixed up. Excuse me, Ms. Cresser, you were correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, they're both 13 right now. Do you want, the second one is?
Yeah, the second one will be first reading.
Okay, got it. Okay, so, under section 13, an ordinance amending the official zone map of the city of Sandusky to rezone seven parcels from a single-family residential district and one parcel from residential business district to public facility district and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect under suspension of the rules as contained in and in accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with section 13 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I, I guess I would view this as, as a, as a huge win for the city. Anytime that our largest employer gets an opportunity to expand their footprint with this kind of an arrangement is, is bound to be good for a city. I think it means more employees. It means, it means, it actually means a safer neighborhood out there also, expanding like that. And I am, my only concern was that isolated neighbor. And I think Mr. Moore certainly explained that very eloquently, that he is not adversarial towards him, that when that gentleman decides to make a move, that perhaps that will be a parking lot also. So, I'm, I am strongly in favor of this and I appreciate the efforts to Firelands Hospital to continue to expand the services in this community.
And, Mr. Brady, additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number two, please. This, this is the one that we would like to do on first reading.
Yes. Item two is an ordinance amending Part One Administrative Code Title VII Boards and Commissions by the addition of Chapter 187 Public Arts and Culture Commission of the codified ordinances in the manner and way specifically set forth here and below and declaring that this ordinance be passed at first reading.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, discussion. There are a few investments that I can imagine the city would make that would have a greater return. Mr. Volz spoke to it very specifically, a 450, 450% annual return on investment is, is just something you don't find in too many places. We've been talking about this for a little while and I'm excited to see the legislation here. This will, this will unfold slowly. It's very modest funding, but we've talked amongst ourselves about the opportunity to use this as match funding and to obtain grant funding. And I think that where there's a community that's willing to put skin in the game, that we will find very active and interested and enthusiastic partners in many different places. And I look forward to public comment on this. I'm glad that Mr. Zuloff was able to speak to it and I look forward to his suggestions. This is something very new for the city and I appreciate the opportunity to slow this down a little bit and take in additional public comment. Any further comments or questions? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the ordinance, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That passes on first reading. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Environmental Design Group LLC of Cleveland, Ohio for the Sandusky Neighborhood Initiative Implementation Projects and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules and full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item four has been pulled from the agenda. Is the next one item four or five now?
Five.
Five. I don't know if it's a suppressor, but if it's five, that's fine.
Whatever you want it to be.
Mr. Waddington wants it to be five, he's always right. Number five.
This ordinance authorizes the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Derek's Mobile Diner LLC to provide for the use of a certain portion of the city's rights of way as described in the grant of a license for encroachment for purposes of installing signage and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There's been a motion, and second, discussion. Again, happy to see Mr. Moore proceed forward with his dream and this is not anything that actually interferes with the, with the sidewalk or anything in the city space. It just extends out overhead in order to be able to make that beautiful sign work. Further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Upstate.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number six, please.
Item six is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a license agreement with Mecca Incorporated Doing Business as Cameo Pizza to provide for the use of a certain portion of the city's rights of way as described in the grant of a license for encroachment for purposes of installing an emergency stairway and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, and second, discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number seven, please.
Item seven is an ordinance making temporary appropriations for the months of January, February, March 2018 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
at least gives us the ability to pay bills, do payroll, pay debt service, that kind of thing until the actual budget is required to be passed by the end of March. And we're on track to do that, so, all it is.
And, and so that's, that's temporary funding until we pass that.
Yep.
And the commission will still have the opportunity to shape the policy of the final budget.
Absolutely.
As a result of that process. And Mr. Wolfser and Ms. Solway, either one of you could chime in. We usually see, we've already seen a draft, I believe you had one early on.
Yeah.
And then we usually see what would be your recommendation, the staff's collective recommendation as to a budget in February. Just remind me of the timing, if you may.
Early March, right Hank?
We've, we've done it many different ways. I think the last two years, we've been able to present it. I think we did it two readings last year, so I think we did it the last meeting of February and the first meeting in March. We kind of left the last meeting in March as a, in case we still needed to sort things out, we kept it open. We've also done it in one reading, where we've just done it in the second meeting in February under section fourteen, or one reading in March. So, you know, at the foot of Eric, on whatever, whatever timing he prefers, we'll get it done, so.
Through the commission president, to the commission, you know, we generally, we have a good draft in place that obviously needs to be refined over the next month or two, but I think late February, early March, we're on track for that. And really, it's just a matter of refining the numbers with Hank and then making sure that the estimates are right as it relates to the needs for the departments and getting that in front of you for your feedback.
Okay, well, I, I do appreciate the fact that in, in recent years, we've had a longer opportunity to take a look at this. There have been some years when the budget wasn't really ready, and it's, it's an organizational issue. It's not any one person's fault, but it hasn't been ready until way too late, and then we end up having to pass it on one reading in the end of March. And it's not a very good way to do business. The way we've been doing it more recently, Solway and Mr. Wolfser, under your leadership, has been much better. So, we do again have an opportunity to consider it by late February. That would be, I think, welcomed by, by me and my colleagues.
Absolutely.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number eight, please.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the payroll stabilization fund and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the, I'm sorry, resolution under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Then a motion, and a second.
Second.
And a motion, and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Solway, the, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars takes us to, what does that, does that give us about a half million dollars in that fund?
Yep, so what, what I was going to say is, just to give everybody some background on the fund, the payroll stabilization fund was set up, you know, many years ago as a way to help to alleviate the impact that the retirement payouts would have on the operating budgets. So what would happen historically if somebody from the general fund retired? The department heads would have to budget that money in their operating budget, and then that really impacted the ability to fill that position again if the payout was significant. So by being able to put, set up a fund, which revised code allowed us to do, and put money into this fund, now allows us to have a mechanism where we can build up some reserve to pay these, these termination payouts, but then it doesn't really impact the operating budgets as much because now the departments can get those positions filled and get boots to the ground quicker. So to give you the numbers behind the payroll stabilization fund for this year, we started off, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was the balance. We used a hundred and eighty thousand this year, which left us with a hundred and thirty four dollars as we sit here tonight. So if we allow the three fifty, that would put us at about four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars going into next year, which I know is a good number because we know we have, talking to some of the department heads, we have some terminations, retirements coming up here in the next two years that will probably be some big ticket items, so it's, it's good to get that set away, set aside, so.
Terminations in the voluntary sense of...
Correct, retirements, termination, I, I, yeah, correct, I'm probably using the word...
We haven't told you yet.
It's the CPA in here.
I mean in Italian.
I guess the question I have, I know oftentimes we talk about this figure at the finance, at the finance committee. Are, are, maybe I missed that meeting, but are they completely on board with this amount?
Yes. Yes. Yes, they're very supportive for us putting, I mean, I think we budgeted initially seventy-five thousand this year.
What, what would be, what would be a maximum number if you said unfunded liability? You think we're at like six or seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think that was the number we looked at, so I mean, we're still behind.
We're halfway there, yeah, we're still two-thirds of the way there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to report that on our caper, the corporate spending financial statement. Well, I think it's been a, a, a good thing, and, you know, I, I know the folks at home, and certainly before I was involved, city government would look at this and say, well, how could that possibly be? But one of the things that we are facing and we're, I mean, we spent a lot of years maintaining our budget by cutting employees. What that meant is we had a progressively older workforce that as, on average, was getting closer and closer to retirement. Those chickens come, come home to roost, and they, because of just the dynamics that the city has gone through, where we cut and cut and cut, and the, the folks with seniority stayed, and that's just the way it works with union protections. We cut from the youngest folks and those with seniority are able to stay. That has put us into the position that we are in, and I, I think it's great forward-thinking on the part of the finance committee and its chair, Mr. Nichols, to be able to make sure that we're setting aside adequate funds. This is a lot of money to set aside, this particular year, we've never set aside this much before, but if it ends up being too much and that money does not need to be there, we always have the option to either not fund it next year or, or pull that back if there's some other need, so I think it's good planning. Additional questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. Our final item, please, Mrs. Cresser.
Yes. The last item is an ordinance adopting amendment number eight to ordinance number seventeen dash zero six four, passed by the city commission on March twenty-seven, two thousand and seventeen, making general appropriations for the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lloyd.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter. Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. Ms. Solway, again, fairly routine item, we've got to do this every year in order to be able to provide all the...
It's just our end-of-year cleanup where we need to reduce any appropriations that we don't plan on using. As you can see, that the total is a large reduction, so that keeps us in compliance.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Questions or comments, commissioners? Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Mr. Wolfser, we turn to you for your report.
Thank you, commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with donations. We'd like to thank Amy and Rich Doty for donating fifteen hundred dollars worth of toys to be distributed to children in the community. Your generosity is greatly appreciated. We'd ask for a motion to approve that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Also, a donation of fifty dollars for the Parks and Recreation Fund to support youth recreational activities is received from the Solway family. We'd like to thank Hank and his family and ask for a motion to approve that donation.
Second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, Solway, the motion is approved with our thanks.
Moving on to administration, there will be a New Year's Eve Bicentennial Blissing, an event created by the faith-based initiative through the Community Involvement Committee of the Bicentennial Commission. This event will occur at four PM on December thirty-first at Sandusky High School. All are welcome, as we would love to celebrate the upcoming two thousand and eighteen year as one community. Also, bicentennial ball tickets will go live to the public on January first. They will be available via the Sandusky State Theater website on January first and in the box office starting on January second. Moving on to the fire department. Chief Wilcox will be ringing the bell for the Salvation Army Red Kettle Campaign at Kroger on Saturday, December twenty-third. On December seventeenth, the fire department, along with the police department, took part in the Christmas party for the kids at Crossroads Volunteers of America. Also, Chief Wilcox and Fire Marshal Steve Rucker will be helped with toy distribution for this, helping with toy distribution on Salvation Army yesterday that took place on December twenty-first. Moving on to finance, both the Administrative Benefit Review Committee and the Finance Committee have recommended a two percent cost of living adjustment for non-bargaining employees effective the first pay period of two thousand and eighteen. We'd like to ask for a motion from the city commission to approve this recommendation.
So, second.
Then a motion, and second discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Also, a final reminder for property owners of vacant dwellings. If your dwelling is expected to remain vacant and unoccupied, we highly recommend that you contact our office to turn off the water. This will help prevent your water lines from freezing and breaking, which would lead to costly repairs for the property owner. The customer accounting office can assist. Their phone number is four one nine six two seven five eight nine three. Again, that's four one nine six two seven five eight nine three. Also, just a final reminder that water and sewer rates will increase with the January bill. Information regarding annual rate increases through two thousand and twenty-one are available on the city's website. Moving on to public works, we've had many instances, instances where private contractors who are working for commercial businesses are pushing snow from parking lots into the street. The street department is asking for cooperation from those private plow drivers to help maintain safety by keeping snow on their property by plowing to the sides of parking lots. Even pushing snow across the street onto the tree lawn creates problems for motorists within the roadway until a city plow can arrive. Also, community development wanted to give a special thanks to Joanne Minifield and the Division of Code Enforcement and the Police Department. Mr. Minifield works with a group of underprivileged children, mostly from Sandusky, ranging in age from three to fourteen, through the Assembly of Jesus Christ Church in Perkins Township, through an Angel Tree program in Sandusky City Hall. Twenty-seven employees donated a total of sixteen pre-wrapped gifts and cash donations totaling six hundred and eighty-three dollars, which allowed each child to receive five items from their wish list apiece. Sandusky Police Department also donated twenty footballs and basketballs, and presents were delivered to the children by Santa Claus on December seventeenth. The church presented the city of Sandusky with a thank you plaque as a symbol of their appreciation. Also, the downtown Sandusky Historic District became effective on December twelfth. The National Park Service formally approved the creation of the larger district and its listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Through this monumental undertaking, the effort resulted in additional forty-three properties being listed, now spanning twelve city blocks and expanding the period of significance of downtown from eighteen thirty-five to nineteen sixty-seven. A special thank you to Maru's Brothers historian and Sandusky native Sharon Tersick for all her work and dedication on this important project. A reminder, the Regular Planning Commission meeting will be held Wednesday, January twenty-fourth, at four thirty PM in the first floor conference room. Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be held Thursday, January eighteenth, at four thirty PM in the first floor conference room. Finally, a New Year's Eve celebration fireworks show will take place at the Jackson Street Pier on Sunday, December thirty-first. There will be a family show taking place at six PM and a New Year's show taking place at midnight. We want to thank Hotel Kilborn and other sponsors for making that event possible. And finally, applications for the youth program supervisor are due by Thursday, January fourth. That concludes my remarks for this evening.
Commissioners, any questions for the city manager? Quite good, I see that somebody has some Christmas parties planned, or they're not finished with their shopping, Mr. Brady, I don't know which one it is. Commissioners, we turn now to old business. Anyone having any items of old business? Anyone having any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lockhart.
In an effort to bring some sweetness to Christmas, I distributed cricket, Christmas cookies for everybody around. Just so you know, if you're seated anywhere and you see those Christmas cookies, I decided to bring their homemade delicious chocolate chips. And because the name Coffee with Commissioners is already taken, I now will declare Cookies with Commissioners for two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Lockhart.
Other items of new business, cookies or otherwise?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I'd just like to expand a little bit on what our city manager said about the fireworks show. Last year, we did a midnight show only, and we just got such great feedback. But, one of the things we wanted to make sure is, we want to make sure that there's a lot of family-friendly events. So, we asked some other local business owners to join in with us, and this is our local businesses saying thank you to our community for supporting us throughout the year of two thousand and seventeen, and we want to ring in the New Year with you in two thousand and eighteen. That's why we wanted to add the family show. So, just to let you know who is helping out this year is Ohio Pyro and Flame, Barrel House, Luco, Barnes Nursery, Zinc Rosary, Crush Wine Bar, Rick and Megan Hogriffy, and they have H2 Productions, Crimis Asphalt and Concrete, Shepherd Shoreline Construction, Shorehouse Tavern, Daily's Pub, Green Durham New York's Wolfsteak Bar, and last but not least, Brady Sign Company. Thank you, Commissioner Brady. So, we'd just like all to invite you and thank you for everything that you do for us in supporting our local businesses, and hope to see you at the show. There will be, on Jackson Street Pier, there will be a pedestrian area for everyone to, if anyone wants to walk down with their families to enjoy the show, and there will also be parking on the south side of the pier. So, it is a free event for the whole community. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Christopher Lloyd, and all of the sponsors, Mr. Brady. Okay, commissioners, we have some boards and appointments, board appointments and reappointments to be made. Mrs. Cresser goes through a methodical process of contacting these folks to make sure they wish to continue serving, and their, their service uncompensated, though it is, is made enthusiastically. And we are very grateful for the advice that these, these bodies provide for us. And the names of, we now have a rule on consistent terms, and the names of those whose terms are ending but wish to serve again, or for those who wish to serve additionally on committees, before you, in the memorandum from Mrs. Cresser. And if the commission wishes to do so, it would be certainly appropriate to appoint those folks to those positions so that they can continue serving as soon as we turn the New Year. Someone care to make such a motion?
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I notice a, I believe it is a typographical error in the cemetery.
Oh, that's correct. You are right.
That should represent your father, Dennis Murray Senior.
Further discussion. Mrs. Cresser, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, except if it's possible, Mr. Harris, I should abstain as to my father's appointment to cemetery board. Can I abstain from a single part of this?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Those appointments are made. And then, commissioners, you also have before you liaison appointments and board and commission reappointments. And Mr. Waddington is pointing out that there are a couple of things that we might need to change going forward. Are there not more copies? Mrs. Cresser, did you know?
Oh, here's some.
Oh. Yeah, Mr. Waddington was hogging them. And these are certainly always a work in process. These are the initial appointments, and Mr. Waddington is not going to let me get through the meeting without pointing out my errors on a couple of these. So, we're going to have to make a couple of adjustments. But, these are simply, as the chair, my appointments regarding various boards, commissions, and department liaisons. But, because of the way our ordinances read, with respect to two, we do need to have a vote. And the, we have a non-voting liaison appointed to serve on the city, city's community, community relations commission, and I would appreciate the motion to permit Ms. Twine to continue to serve as liaison for that commission.
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. All the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And we also need to appoint one person to the, one of our members, to the planning commission, and I would ask that after a lot of arm twisting, not wrestling, I would have lost that, but after a lot of arm twisting, Mr. Waddington has agreed to move to a different area, although he loves park and rec a great deal. He's agreed to move to the planning commission. And so, I would ask for a motion to appoint Mr. Waddington to-
Second.
Then a motion and second, discussion. All the favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that appointment is made. Any additional items of new business? We turn then to audience participation. Anyone wishing to, anyone wishing to address the city on any items of city business, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Anthony Carter, five three oh nine Columbus Avenue. When they were talking about the people getting their pictures taken at the postcard, I've seen a lot of that. All the prom people were down there, and that was very interesting, and that was nice to see. The same time that the prom people were down, there was a wedding, getting pictures taken in Peddler's Alley against the wall, and down through the alley, he was carrying the bride through the alley and in the arch and stuff, and it was a lot of fun to see. I think that's a good starting point for Sandusky, and like I said before, at a other meet, at a previous meeting, making a selfie tour through the town. When he was talking about artwork, when I was in Seattle, they talked about any new buildings, whatever it was gonna, the total cost of creating, building a new building in Seattle, one percent of that building had to be dedicated to some sort of outdoor art. And they've got some interesting art in Seattle. They've got a building with a great big giant steel man, and his arm just goes up and down. He's got a big hammer. There's another one on the corner, and it is a huge pile of brick. Staircases going this way, staircases going this way. They all go to nothing, just a giant pile of brick staircase, and someone said that was the IRS building. So, that was kind of self-explanatory. But, I don't know if that includes buildings that are being rehabbed, or refabbed, or redone, but I know the brand-new buildings have to have that. It's been a long year for a lot of people, everybody in town dealing with the pier and stuff, and it's been a learning experience. And I think, I think it's been interesting. I think it's been fun, and like Ms. Twine said, it has been tedious at times for everybody. But, I think it's gonna be a big accomplishment. One thing, a lot of people have been called a lot of names when they talk about going to the pier and watching the boats, or watching the fisher people, just watching the kids. One of the ladies from Jackson Street Pier has a picture of, has a video of a guy running up and down the end of the pier while the waves are coming on the pier so hard that they're spraying up four feet in the air, and he's trying to avoid them. He wasn't doing a good job. They were just having a hysterical time up there. So, we've been called lots of names, and one of them is, we're not forward-thinking, because we don't want to make improvements. Well, I was in Toledo yesterday, and I picked up a entertainment magazine up there, and they have something quite interesting, and I don't think any of us, they're very forward-thinking up there. So, I just thought I'd throw this out there. You could think about this over Christmas, and it'd give you something to talk about. Senior rugby for sixty-five and older. New craze that combines fitness with meeting new friends, great exercise, and team camaraderie. Co-ed naked senior rugby. Now, I don't know how forward-thinking you want to be, but I think that is just something I don't want to see.
I don't think our rec department would sponsor that.
Okay. But, I just wanted to say, everyone have a new, Merry Christmas. We'll look forward to a new year, lots of challenges, lots of accomplishments, and I think this is gonna be a good new year. Merry Christmas.
You know, I, I, I would like to say in response to that, it is, it is the bane of the democratic process these days that we have all these comments in social media. It discourages the healthy exchange of ideas, which we've had so often in this room. It discourages people from running, discourages people from commenting. It's unfortunate the way it's happened. One of the things we've learned is that free speech without ownership is not, is not free, and it's not speech. It's just shouting, and it has a huge societal cost. So, I appreciate the perspective that you and your neighbor there have brought and others. We don't always all agree. That's fine. But, we should be able to do it honorably and peacefully. And I think we've done that in this room, so I appreciate your contributions. Mr. Ziloff?
Since I probably, you know, I would have said this earlier, but I was, you know, probably expending my five minutes. So, on, on the topic of public art, I was delighted to learn that the Friends of the Greenhouse has been working on doing some restoration work at the fountain, and I, you know, I wish I knew the name of it. Maybe we don't, maybe it's sort of been lost, I don't know. At, I think it's, where here on Avenue meets Wayne Street, that triangle formed, those two streets and East Adams, there's a piece of public art. It was, it's a fountain that's a piece of sculpture in its own right. It won design awards, and budget constraints have, have let it decay a little bit. But, but I think that the Friends of the Greenhouse and, and the, as far as our, as well as our parks department, deserves all the support they can get on that project. We have other pieces of public art, and this, this sort of, maybe should, we'll, we'll also make sure there's some funds to maintain, and, and those, those monuments, and make sure that we're good stewards of those. We've got the wall at Peddler's Alley that, for some reason, someone wanted to tear down years ago, and they just didn't like it, and there was an agenda to tear it down. And people rallied and, and raised a lot of funds, and fixed it up, and shored it up, and ensured that it was stable. And so, Mr. Sopforth, who's still alive, living in southern Ohio, built that wall here. He also made a contribution to the community by working with, he did a residency with the Sandusky Cultural Center, worked with students, showed them how to make that kind of art on a much smaller scale. There's a, there's a little brick wall, as it were, out in front of Sandusky High School. A lot of people have, have wondered, you know, where did this thing come from? But, but the students got to, got to learn how to do that. And, and Mr. Sopforth was, was an innovator. Nobody had done anything like this before, that I'm, I'm aware of, and has some recognition for it. He's, there's some examples in Columbus. There's an entire house built like that. I believe there may have been a, a building on two fifty that was a restaurant that may have been since, since torn down. So, so he might actually have formed his little place in history because, because he was an innovator. That's how, usually how an artist becomes, becomes important in, in our history. So, so, we shouldn't think, think that we don't have any public art. We've, we've got a little bit of it, and we should also celebrate what we already have, and, and maybe recognize it more and enhance it. So, I just, but, but again, this all started, and I'll end it with, with that fountain at the triangle, and maybe it deserves some more.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Ziloff. Mr. Brady?
That is Dowk Park. Thanks to, Mrs. Cresser knows all of those names. That is Dowk Park, named after, I presume, the hind of Dowk.
I'm sure this is all documented somewhere.
It is.
I'd love to know where, where it is, and maybe it could be, you know, these could be cataloged on the city website.
Well, from the sounds of what Mr. Holtz was talking about, that sounds like the kind of thing that the Arts Commission would be undertaking, potentially to catalog what we have. And, you know, let's not forget, the, our own iconic Boy with the Boot, is a form of public art, certainly. And, Mr. Ziloff, your time is finished, though.
So, the new ordinance, Boy with the Boot would be prohibited because it states it's manufactured or discouraged to prevent it from being used.
The choir, I believe.
But, it's a product. It was a product. Now, it's, it's taken on its own, you know, history. It's become much, for a while, the myth was that we had the only one. I found twenty-seven, I'm guessing twenty-seven other cities have Boys with the Boot. Some of them are painted different colors. So, but it's become a much-welt icon, you know, in the heart and soul of it. But, probably not the best example of both of those. Not particularly.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziloff, my now former friend. Are there any other items of new business?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Sandusky, and to all of you fine people we have the opportunity to work with. It is a pleasure. Not every single minute, but every single day. And happy new year to all of you, and we'll resume this work in the new year. Would someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Let's get adjourned.